Will you please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please have a roll call?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Kelly.
President.
Councilmember Turner is absent. Councilmember McCafferty?
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Here.
Councilmember Gurneo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here. Sorry, I was reading.
And our town attorney is present remotely.
Okay. Introductions, presentations, proclamations. We have a presentation by representatives from Arizona Public Service, APS, regarding their battery storage project and their fire mitigation program.
McKinsey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Get this pulled up here. And then they told me that I can drive, so we'll see if I can figure this out. So I'm here to talk about a really exciting new program that's coming to Chino Valley that'll help APS to support the grid with clean energy. See? I already failed the first test. There we go. Okay, so this is an overview of our, the area in blue is the area that APS serves. We are Arizona's largest and longest-serving utility. I think most of you know we're an investor-owned public service company and we have, you know, relatively small-to-mid-market customer base, but from a service territory square miles perspective and diversity of service territory, which I'll talk about in the next presentation, we're pretty significant on here out of 11 out of the 15 counties. So this is APS's clean energy commitment. So we have committed to provide clean, carbon-free generation 100% by 2050. Our target for 2030 is 65% clean, and we're already 50% clean today. We have over a gigawatt of solar installed on the system, and we also own the nation's largest nuclear generating station in Palo Verde in Phoenix. So we want to get to 65% clean by 2030, and so how are we going to get there? Our goal is to get to 100, and the best pass, best path with the lowest cost impact to our customers. So that means that we're planning to focus on utility-scale solar and energy storage. Just like most things, if you buy it in bulk, it's cheaper in the long run, and we've found the same with solar and battery investments. Residential rooftop solar is fixed to your roof, so it doesn't track with the sun, and it's also limited in size by the size of your house and the condition of your roof, which means that the hours that it produces are limited as well. Utility-scale solar is built on mechanisms that can track with the sun and maximize solar output. But as we all know, the sun doesn't shine at night, which is why we're investing in programs like the Solar After Sunset Program, which is the program we're talking about today. So this is our path to clean, to be able to retrofit existing solar sites with utility-scale batteries and be able to store the power generated by solar panels and release it to the grid after the sun has gone down. So this is a typical load chart for APS on how we serve the load today. So if you see the, this is July 30th, which is typically when we see our highest peak demand. And the blue line is the load across the whole system throughout the day. So you can see if people are, you know, this is the hours here. So people are sleeping, then they're starting to get up, get that coffee machine going, leave, get ready to, or go to work, get the AC kicking on, the AC's kicking on more. You're cooking dinner, maybe doing a couple loads of laundry, then getting ready for bed. Lights are coming off, and then you're going to bed and starting the next day. So you can see the energy peaks later in the day, not necessarily when solar's producing. So our obligation at APS is to be able to serve customers with power when they need it. When the majority of our customers need power is called our system peak demand. We typically see that, as I mentioned, around the six-to-seven timeframe. So we build out our portfolio of generation based on how we can serve that peak demand. We start with our base load generation plants. These are not flexible, they're reliable, and they're 100% on and ready to go. And then we add in our more flexible resources like our renewables and our natural gas that peaks on and off when the sun is not shining or the wind is not blowing. So similar to a credit card, also, we purchase excess power from our other utilities on the open market. When it's cheap, maybe if hydro is cheap from Oregon, we'll purchase that at a discounted rate and use that to fill in this net purchases difference here. We do this to keep prices low for our customers, but also ensure reliability and then never put all of our eggs in one basket. Just like our 401Ks, it's better to diversify our portfolios as well. So this program and the addition of this battery will allow us to extend this renewable degradation curve. So you can see right here where the green kind of drops off. That's when the sun starts to set and the wind starts to calm down. And so what we're trying to do by the installation of batteries is extend that to meet more of that peak window and extend that green line more. So like I mentioned, this program is specifically targeted to harness the solar production during the peak of the day. We don't necessarily need it during the peak of the day because we're at work or at school, and so they'll use that time to charge batteries. And then they'll use it on the grid when the demand is high in the evening during family dinners and bedtime. So we're in the design phase right now. We're targeted to start construction in October of this year through April of 2023, and we plan to be able to start using that for next summer's peak. And it has a 20-year design life. So this shows the location. It's within, right next to our solar plant. And this shows the battery units here that's zoomed in from this box and shows the proximity to the home sites here. This is a better overview here that shows the, it's about the batteries where they're going to go. Over here is about 2,300 feet from the property line of the nearest home site there, and this is Road 4 South. So this is our existing solar plant right here. This is a breakdown of the site layout as well as the location of the first responder station. So we've been working closely with CAFMA, and Chief is here today to design and then eventually train their first responders to make sure that they're aligned and they know what to do in the event of an emergency. So you've heard me talk about before, and you're going to hear it again in our fire mitigation presentation about how safety is number one for APS, and this project's no different. We're designing all these projects to meet or exceed all applicable industry safety regulations and code requirements, including all the items listed here. We also have robust safety requirements in conjunction with our battery provider to ensure the safety of the systems. Here is an overview of the scale of the battery system. So this is a 19-megawatt battery system, or about 100,000 battery cells, which is enough to power over 10,000 homes for about four hours. And that shows the typical battery cell, three inches by seven inches by eight inches, and then it's all built up into these different cubes. Or it's not the technical term. I brought the battery expert if we have specific technical term questions. So with that, I'll take any questions on this project.
You guys got questions on that side?
No.
How about over here? All right.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Not at all. You did good. Thank you.
Okay. Now switching gears a little bit, we're going to talk about a really relevant project right now. You guys have heard me speak about this before, but I'm happy to emphasize the importance of safety and wildfire mitigation for our communities. So this is our APS promise. So as Arizona stewards, we do what's right for the people and prosperity of our state, and safety and reliability are number one. We are consistently ranked among the most reliable electric utilities in the U.S., and our customers typically experience less than one outage per year. We're consistently within the top 10% amongst U.S. utilities in safety performance as well, and we're really proud of both of those metrics. However, wildfire season is unpredictable. As we can tell, sometimes it comes earlier than any of us expected. In 2021, Arizona experienced 1,400 reported wildfires that burned over 600 acres, 600,000, excuse me, acres of land, mainly caused by almost 402,000 lightning strikes across the state, which is more than double what we saw in 2019 and '20 combined. That makes last year's fire season one of the most impactful year to date as far as land is concerned. And so for a number of years now, APS has completed the following fire risk, fire risk reduction measures that I'll detail in the next couple slides. We cover, our plan covers prevention, mitigation, and response, and I'll touch on each of those. So from a wildfire prevention standpoint, APS works on maintaining and clearing right-of-ways and our equipment to ensure that we mitigate the fuels around our infrastructure. We also complete detailed poll-by-poll line inspections of every distribution feeder in a cycle, and each troubleman's required to sign off that they have reported all concerns on each polls. We have teams identified to patrol and correct any potential issues that could cause wire to fall in high-fire-risk areas. And every year, we conduct public safety line patrols on all overhead equipment in the heavy wooi or wildland urban interface, it's my favorite acronym, areas, and heavily vegetated areas. So that's about 5,000 miles across the state. And during these, we physically walk down every line with the use of drones, UTVs, and by foot to put eyes on the condition of every piece of equipment. We have about 3,700 miles of overhead lines in northern Arizona and over 1,900 of those in the northwest, which is Yavapai County for our purposes. And in addition, we have a number of customer programs and tips to help create defensible space and allow you to work safely around our power lines when you're creating defensible space. Speaking of defensible space, this is a photo of what we call our defensible space around poles or DSAP. This program is from the Tinder Fire up in Payson, and it shows a pole that is perfectly intact after a fire went through the surrounding area based on the clearance around the poles. And actually, I'll claim on this one, in the Crooks Fire, we have assessed our damage, and because of this program, we have not had any poles damaged in that current fire, which is a huge accomplishment. So we had one cover on a transition that melted, and so far, that's all we've seen. So pretty, defensible space works around your homes and around poles. Here's some of the customer programs available on APS.com. We have a Right Tree, Right Place program. So that has tree recommendations and care instructions for customers that are landscaping around power lines. I know not everybody thinks they're as beautiful as I do, and so this gives you some good options to shield those power lines with trees that are safe to do so. We also have some safety tips and tips around creating that defensible space again around your home. We've seen how much that works, and that's an important thing. And then I'll just point out quickly our public safety hotline. So if you see something that looks unsafe, please don't hesitate to call. We are more than happy to come out and take a look and ensure that it's safe. This is an example of what the distance between the different lines and trees that is safe. So, you know, where you can populate, you know, low-growing shrubs within the wire zone, and then you can use these bigger trees a little further out so that they don't have a risk of falling into the lines. Speaking of defensible space, best practice is to create a space around, at least 30 feet around your home, thin trees within 125 feet, and eliminate branches that overhang the roof. Clean your roof and gutters, and then remove those ladder fuels. So there's tips online from our website that go to fire-wise sites as well. We, APS, will be sending letters to all customers in the area of a high-fire risk based on their proximity to the wooi and the forest, and will be, they'll include safety and fire-wise tips as well as a notification that they could experience longer-than-normal outages during the high-fire risk season. Some of you heard me speak last year, and we're reinstating those same measures to increase our operations protocol so that if a line has a fault, before we re-energize that line, we ensure our first responders patrol sections of that line with additional rigor during outages. This will result in longer-than-normal outages because these patrols are often in the middle of the night or across very difficult terrain. We have the local highest level of journeyman identified to identify the concern, and then a number of local area crews to respond. So while reliability is something we pride ourselves on at APS, we recognize this could prolong outages, but we prioritize the safety of our customers and communities above the reliability of our services. However, we're also leveraging more technology than ever before. We've strategically installed over 2,500 fault indicators. Those are non-communicating fault indicators that will blink a light at the location when a fault occurs and signal, and signal visually for a troubleman to note, to be able to go to that spot and see where that is. We, like I mentioned, we installed over 2,500 of those, and we've seen a lot of success. Specifically, our customers have noticed those, and they'll call and say, "Hey, that blinky light is on," and that, they tell our troublemen, "Go right here to this address," and it tells them right where the trouble is. So we love it when our customers get engaged from that perspective. We can all be troublemen. We also encourage customers, when there is an outage, to please call in and ensure that they, oftentimes, they think we know, and sometimes, we don't know. So it's best if you report an outage, and we'll give you the best way to do that coming up here. We also have a team of fire mitigation specialists. Most of you know Wade Ward. He's local to the area. And those folks coordinate with APS response with local responding agencies. We're part of the cooperating agencies for these big wildland fires, and we're really engaged to make sure that we are available 24/7. And oftentimes, we're asked to proactively de-energize lines in the event of a fire to protect first responder's safety. We also realize any disruption of power is a major inconvenience to customers, so we're trying to get the word out as many different ways as we can and communicate the reason behind these changes to ensure customers are being communicated to and know the tools available. There's an APS app, as I mentioned, or you can go to APS.com to access our outage map, which includes updates and estimated restoration times. You can also sign up for text alerts to get outages specific to your home, and they'll text you ETRs or text you updates. Additionally, we're adding measures this year that'll indicate on a map if you're in an area of high-fire risk and experiencing a prolonged outage due to wildfire mitigation. We saw that most recently in the Crooks Fire. We had to de-energize 32 customers, and it was labeled as a public safety event. And last year, APS began auto-enrolling customers with a valid email address to receive outage notifications via email. And we're working on auto-enrolling text alerts. But for now, to make sure you're receiving those alerts, if you log on to your account at APS.com or just call APS to make sure your email address and phone number is up to date. And if you download the app, it's one click of a button to report an outage. Some tips on what to do during an outage. Please do not approach or go near downed power lines. They may look de-energized, but they could not be. So please avoid them and stay at least 100 feet away and call 911. Also, in the event of a sustained outage, APS will set up ice stations or offer ice reimbursements so that you can put those in your freezer to keep your food fresh throughout an outage. Another fun, little-known fact is if you keep refrigerators and freezers closed, food will stay fresh up to eight hours in a refrigerator and up to 24 hours in a freezer if the doors are kept closed. Another good, helpful reminder, please turn off and unplug unnecessary electrical equipment to prevent the system from overloading when power returns. So thank you for your time. Do you have any questions today?
Questions?
Nope.
How about over there?
No.
I think we're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great program.
All right, can we do Call to Public?
Yes, we can. Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for Call to the Public may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. I do have a couple.
Okay.
First one, Rachel, for now.
Hello again.
Hello again. This is becoming a regular thing. I just wanted to come before you guys tonight to give you a little bit of an update pertaining to the continuance you granted last month. The first egregious act, I think, that happened was that applicant, when he was making an argument for that continuance, was able to use my name personally as part of his argument. "I will speak with Rachel. I will reach out with Rachel." And I wasn't afforded the opportunity to speak for myself in that meeting, which I don't think was right. Had I been, I would have let you guys know that the same thing I sat there and told him before the meeting is that we're not interested in working with him. He has proved himself to be untrustworthy, no integrity. I think he has a hard time following through. His actions since, after I got over the severe disappointment by the decision made by council, I went home and thought, "You know what? I'm a better person than this, so if he reaches out to me, I'm going to work with him." And he did. He called me the very next day, and we've had a couple of conversations and email exchanges since then, all of which he's made promises that he hasn't followed through with. He's passed the buck to the town. I'm waiting on the town. Waiting on the town. "Oh, I'm in the process of sending you an email right now." And then it never shows up. So I was prepared to come before you guys today and give you an update on that. And yesterday, I thought, "You know what? I'll reach out to him one more time, just to give him an opportunity." You know, because maybe he's busy, right? I like to see the best in people, and so I called him, and he said, "Give me, you know, a few minutes to call you back." And he called me back, and he said, "Oh, I was just getting ready to email you some information." You know, he's told me he's having renderings drawn up, and, and he's working with his engineer, and he wants to do single-family homes and all of these things that, as you guys mentioned, if he wanted to make a major change to his project, he would have to restart with planning and zoning. So it's just become clear to me, I mean, as of 5:30 PM today, I still hadn't received an email from him, that this is a person who doesn't follow through with what he says. And it's unfortunate that the community has been inconvenienced by this because he answered questions that day to say he had no plans on changing the entrance. He would proceed with the plan the way that it was. I think it was unfair that that wasn't heard that day, and I think every day since, he's proved it. He's proved that he didn't earn that continuance, and he hadn't done a single thing prior to earn it. So now you're left with your constituents really upset and pissed off. And we're going to put that to action. But I just wanted to update you that I have been open to working with him. He has not followed through, and I fully don't expect that to change. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Kennedy? My name is Ann Kennedy. I wanted to go over the Town of Chino Valley core values, which were developed by the employees in 2014, and they're defined as below. I'm going to read just the bullet points and not go into each description. Number one is integrity. Number two is teamwork. Number three is responsible communication. Number four is service to community. Number five is innovation. And number six is leadership. These are available on the Town Council website for the town. The reason I wanted to bring these up is I was very disappointed that on 3/22, the council meeting, that there was not enough seats for all of the public to be able to see or speak at that meeting if they wanted to. I know that council and the town knew it was going to be, sorry, I get nervous. It was going to be a busy meeting. We did make it aware to you guys as well beforehand that we, as a community, would like it held in a government building that you approved of, like a school, so there was enough seats and enough availability for people to even just attend, even if they didn't want to speak. I'm bringing this up with your core values, just as someone in the community who's disappointed in the way that was actually handled and rolled out. I'd like to see community meetings that have a big presence, held in a government building is fine, where everyone can attend. And like I said, I know that was brought up to council, to the town, by community members that maybe we should have this at a bigger venue. Think about that. It was ignored or not addressed. It was held here. People were in the hall. People were outside. They couldn't hear or see the meeting, and they were not able to come in. And I think that we can do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Bob Shacker.
Mayor, council?
How you doing?
Bob Shacker. We moved to Chino Valley several years ago. Nice and quiet town. It had a lot of space. People were friendly. And then after a while, I'm finding out that a lot of things are changing on the zoning. And I don't find out until I read the paper. Then it's way too late. And, uh, let's see. And I've been to a couple of the council meetings. I should have been to more. But I see that you're all swaying to developers, not to the townspeople. So I'm going to run for council and see if I can change that. And I'll get more information so I know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are the only cards that I had submitted.
Did anybody else want to speak that didn't fill out a card? All right. Current events, summaries, and reports. This item is for...
Excuse me, on the floor?
Excuse me, sir.
Sir?
We need to keep the talk down so we can hear what's going on, okay? Thank you. Current events, summaries, and reports. This item is for information only. The mayor and any council member or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council. And any questions may be answered. No action will be taken. I have nothing. How about down there, please?
Nothing.
I have something to say with, I attended the Eddie Awards with Maggie this, last week, and she's a rock star. Everybody in the state loves her. She's doing a great job for the town. And Maggie, we appreciate it. Thank you.
John?
The Ojoga Benito Football Club, on June 24th and 25th of this, of this year, we're bringing in a three-time National Coach of the Year and one of the top college recruiters in the country to help teach the high school coaches and the coaches and the parents about how to prepare their kids to seek scholarships through soccer. It is also germane to other sports, but that's what we're doing because we just think as a, you know, the Quad City area, we don't do enough to get our players exposure to get into college, and our coaches just don't know what to do. to get into college, and our coaches just don't know what to do. So we're gonna have the top recruiter in the country come and teach them. Same time, there's a free clinic, he's gonna teach them the newest methodologies to a bunch of kids, and it's all free.
Again, kudos to Parks and Rec for the new frisbee course out there. Seen a lot of people out there playing, both adults and kids seem to enjoy it. Nice job.
Yeah, um, let's see. Tomorrow is the tree planting service, yes? Tomorrow's the tree planting service at noon at Memory Park. That's exciting. And the firefighter, firefighter foundation pancake breakfast was a success. Eric, Councilman Grunio, thank you. I know he took a part in that with your football club, so, and I won a couple raffles, raffles, so that's always a good thing. And generally, I'm just, I'm proud of Chino right now. I think we're doing well. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. Just a couple of things, and Councilmember Armstrong already touched on it, but I did want to mention again, the new disc golf course that has gone in. It's a nine-hole course, three, par three, and it is one of only two in Yavapine County. So it's, it's a great asset, and just a really, it, it provides free recreation to our community, and it's a really good thing. And I, I wanted to give a, a special thanks to a couple of people who helped get that done. Mr. Colby Sharer, he was an outstanding volunteer, and he put countless hours in, a lot of labor to help get that laid out and going. And also Ryan Hannan, he's actually with the Prescott Disc Club, and he helped design the course. And there were a number of other volunteers who got out there, along with our own Scott Bruner, who helped make that happen. So if you have an opportunity, get out and check that out. It's, it's a really good amenity for our town. And then next, another, kudos to Maggie, who helped bring the UTV Grand Prix to our town. That recent event was very successful. There were over six hundred participants who came out to participate in that, and I know a number of you were out there, but it's an opportunity, not just for adults, but for kids who like the racing sport, to get into that and just have family fun out there. We did have a couple of hiccups, as anytime you have a first-time event, but things that we're gonna learn from. It was a particularly dusty day, and I think probably the windiest weekend we've had yet. So we're going, working with the event organizer to see if maybe perhaps there's a better time of year for us to do that, but they were very happy. The response was very positive. And it also, you know, bringing six hundred extra people to come in, that's a tourism attraction, and brings economic development for our town, and lets people see how wonderful the Town of Chino Valley really is. So we'll look forward to having more of that. That same event organizer is going to have the UTV event in, at the end of May. It's a little different type of event, but we look forward to that as well. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Consent agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Does anybody want to remove the one item that there is?
Nope.
All right. Maintain motion.
I will make a motion. We approve the March 29, 2022 Special Meeting Strategic Planning Minutes.
Second. Motion made in second and twice. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Action item: The council may vote to recess the public meeting hold executive session on any item then on this agenda pursuant to ARS 38431.03A3 for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public, and no action may be taken in executive session. Item A: Consideration and possible action to approve Amendment One to the Perkinsville Road Water and Sewer Extension Project Professional Services Agreement with EPS Group Incorporated in the amount of $72,280. Frank?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Back in October, council approved the design contract with EPS Group Consulting Engineers for the preparation of bid documents for the extension of the Perkinsville water line across Highway 89. So this project, it's three phases of construction depending on cost, so if we could combine phases, they may be combined. So don't let the phasing worry you too much. But basically, taking the water and sewer from the intersection of One East and Perkinsville Road to the highway, hopefully across the highway, we'll have to, uh, let's see if I can go back here. My finger was...
Previous.
Well, it's easier said than done. Is there a back on here?
Previous. Second one down.
Oh, see, I'm from Alabama, so I was looking for back, so. But, uh, so we'll have to bore under the highway. We can't stop the highway traffic. So it'll be digging down in pretty deep pits like they did when they went across for Walgreens and, and doing a bore across. And then continuing along to a little cul-de-sac called Angus Place, and that'll take us to the back of the Hawksnest Development. And this picture's a little small, because we wanted you to see the scope of the hundred and eighty acres that this could serve. And what that would do is when Hawksnest develops, that will complete the loop of the water, so that if any water lines break, they have another way to feed on the other side of the highway. Right now, if any of the water breaks on the west side of the highway, they're just out of water. So again, that's what that project is for. And what this amendment is for is in the preliminary design stages, we came across some, some gaps that we need to fill in with the design process. One of those is we need some more right-of-way work. Typically, when you look at water and sewer projects, you're in the middle of the road, so you don't really worry about surveying a bunch of right-of-way. With it being so close to the right-of-way lines to get underneath the highway, we need to figure out exactly where we're at for those bore pits and everything. So we need good right-of-way survey on that. And the additional right-of-way that we're looking for has to do with the Perkinsville 44 development across One East. Is going to three lanes per their section. So we want to plan accordingly between the highway and One East to design everything to go to eventually a three-lane section. So hopefully, we could transition into three lanes, from three lanes into two, or if we need to wait and get right-of-way in the future, we can design it now for just the two lanes, but have the ability to have the manholes and everything in the right spot for the three lanes. So that's what that's for. And then the interim street section is again, to deal with the two lanes versus the three, because it's more expensive to build three lanes, but we planned for it. Need some additional potholing. Prescott Water's got some water services around there, and, and look for those. And with ADOT coordination, we figure it'll take a little extra time to satisfy ADOT, because it's a big concern of theirs about maintaining traffic on a 30,000-vehicle-a-day road, so. That brings that amendment to an additional 72,280 that the consultant expects they'll need for the design. And so the contract total with amendments would, would come to 279,080 if approved by council.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
No.
Question?
Yeah. Frank, I was reading the EPS Group letter, and so we don't have momenoms or monuments established down Perkinsville?
We do, but we need surveyors to verify those and, and verify the property pins on the outside.
Okay, and then, but, so the, there, that would be clearly established, though, for the ADOT area, right? They should have that clearly established, should they?
You would think, but that's why we need the surveyors to, to do that, because that road, round the roundabout's pretty recent, but we're dealing with a lot of construction money here, so we want to make sure we get it right.
Do we anticipate any, where we have easements, but no right-of-way dedications on the east side of 89 on Perkins?
Not right now. We think we have right-of-way wherever we've putting in utilities now, but this'll also identify the need if we need to widen that right-of-way for a three-lane section. When I say three lanes, it's one lane with a center-turn lane.
Right, no, I understand.
That we can not only know where the existing right-of-way is, but where the proposed needs are in case development comes in in the future. We can plan for that very accurately.
I was just surprised they didn't have any monuments on Perkins, and I...
Well, they probably do. We just don't usually include that in our construction plans, because it costs extra money to get the surveyors out there.
Okay.
So that's what we're doing, is we're actually doing that to the surveyor standards, which, like I said, we try to save a buck when we can, but this case...
Last question. Where's the money coming from? Are you gonna reprogram it from another project, or do we know?
It will come out of the capital projects, I believe. It's, um, trying to see that, will you stayed in local fiscal recovery funds for this project?
Okay, so that won't diminish another project that we have earmarked for those funds?
No. I believe that means, Cindy, that that's the Recovery Act money is the interpretation of that.
Thank you, Frank.
I just want to clarify, you meant Perkinsville Road, right? Not Perkins Road? Because that's down by the airport.
Yeah, the one right, yeah, Perkinsville.
Okay, thank you.
Did I leave off the "ville"?
Yeah.
Well, there's two. There's one down by the airport also.
Spoken like an engineer.
Yeah, and the aisle at Safeway.
Tom, did you have anything?
Not a thing, sir.
All right, we'll maintain a motion.
I will make a motion. We approve Amendment Number One to the Perkinsville Road and Water and Sewer Extension Project Professional Services Agreement with EPS Group Incorporated in the amount of $72,280.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B: Public hearing, consideration, and possible action to approve the replat of Track B as a buildable lot as presented, subject to staff report and information provided during this hearing, and the conditions of approval in attachment to. Will?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Will Denji, Senior Planner here with the town. As read the request before you, is a replat request for Track B, which is a tract of land parcel located within the Chino Meadows Unit Two subdivision. The applicant, Jay Bates, on behalf of Wright Homes, is in attendance this evening. The little over half-acre subject property is located north of the intersection of Cottonwood Lane and Porcupine Pass. It is part of the Chino Meadows Unit Two subdivision, which extends to the north and to the west. To the east, you have the Chino Meadows Unit Three subdivision. The property's zone, existing zoning is SR 0.16, and is currently used by neighboring properties for overflow parking. Within the subdivision plat, the property is, the subject property is identified as Track B. However, the plat does not define what Track B is intended to be used for. It is simply labeled Track B. The item was presented before the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 5th, received a 6-1 vote in favor. With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission forwards a recommendation of approval to Town Council, and I will open it up for questions or discussion from the council.
How about down here, questions?
Just the one, during the planning and zoning, there was concern that the vice chair brought up, and I just wanted a little clarification of how the attorney clarified that the track would not be considered, I can't remember the exact language that they used.
So we do have our attorney present, Andrew. Is that something you can answer for us?
I'm, I'm happy to clarify if somebody can be a little more specific on what we're clarifying.
So it was in regards to the meeting that we had with Vice Chair Paziac, following the April 5th meeting, within the purpose statement of the SR 0.16 zoning district of, it's not the town's intention, I'm paraphrasing, the intention of the town to create any more lots with the SR 0.16 zoning. His fear was that by replating this lot, that that could open up a little loophole, if you will, and create more of these lots throughout the town.
Trying to, the screen isn't showing to see if there is anything, but I guess it just says questions, so it doesn't really...
Can you go back a slide? Yeah.
Yeah, I just, and this is the, the parcel B or Track B, I don't remember which one we...
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, we, uh, we don't believe that this falls into the same category as what the prior prohibition in the .016 language was intended to cover, because it, it is already a platted tract. It just was not a lot at the time. So my concern was originally that we weren't advancing new subdivisions, not necessarily something that's already plotted within a subdivision.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I just recall that he expressed concerns that then people would be looking around for every piece of track in the community and saying, oh, I can build there, it's a .16 in the zoning. So that, I wanted to make sure that that concern was legitimately verified.
Absolutely. So the, the biggest concern with that loophole is, as Andrew spoke, it's non, you know, it's not a concern in that regard, but in regards to finding additional, you know, little tracks within an outdated sub, or an older subdivision, that might not have a definition of what that tract was used for. Staff is preparing a text amendment to make this a lot more clear going forward, so you will see some change on that.
Thank you.
Tom?
Nothing. Thank you.
Amy?
Yeah, come back to me, please.
Okay. I, I would like, that is gonna be on water and sewer, correct?
That is correct. It's already...
Chino Meadows Water, and then...
Yep, it is actually located within Porcupine Pass, right in front of the lot.
Thank you. I seen somebody had a concern about the drainage there.
Can I have Frank talk on that?
Sure.
And that question confused me then, and still confused me now. I have no concern about the drainage. The only concern right now is where the cars are parking in that lot may create some erosion issues because of the lack of vegetation, so I would think any runoff with an extra rooftop in the Chino Meadows subdivision as an aggregate is negligible.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank. What, you're good?
I'm good.
All right, let me find my paper. All right. Nothing more? So we're gonna, I'm gonna declare that we're gonna hold, have a...
I have a question.
What? Oh, I forgot about you, I'm sorry.
It's okay, happens, I, I get used to it. And this is just for one home.
Sorry, excuse me again. One home? That is correct.
This is one home, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Well done.
Now you're done?
I am.
Okay.
For a minute.
All right, now we're gonna declare that we're gonna have a public hearing, and we're gonna declare that hearing open. So if anyone, did they file cards?
I did not have anybody request to speak for the public hearing.
Okay, does anybody want to speak about this? It's here. All right, hearing done, we're gonna close it. Hearing, and is, there's no further discussion, questions, comments?
This is just a single manufactured home on a lot that's already there, and all we're doing is saying he can put the house on it? Cool, thank you. Are you gonna close public hearing?
I did.
Oh, see, I wasn't paying attention. It happens with Jack. Okay. I will make a motion to approve the replat of Track B as a buildable lot presented, subject to staff report and information provided during this hearing, and the conditions of approval in attachment to.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mister, Lon's not here, so will you do the adjournment?
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
How come you didn't do it?
Why were there so many letters against this?
And for nobody to show up for the public hearing.
He owns...